9:00 AM and first of all, welcome to the Ordinary Meeting of Mount Isa City Council. The time is 9:00 AM and I now declare the meeting open. I'd like to start by acknowledging the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet, the Kalkadoons, and pay respects to elders past, present, and emerging, and extend that respect to all of Australia's First Nation people. I'll just read out our recording policy. Please note, this Ordinary Meeting of Mount Isa City Council may be livestreamed and recorded in accordance with the council's recording of council meeting policy. As a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded. By remaining in chambers, it is assumed that your consent is given if your image is inadvertently broadcast. And now, can I put a motion forward before we kick off? That in accordance with Section 277 of the Local Government Regulation 2012, the following participants will be taking part in the meeting via teleconference and will be noted as in attendance, and that's Councillor Peter MacRae. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favour? Thank you, and that's carried. Now, can I please invite Pastor David Quilty from the Isa Community Church to give a prayer?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Father God, we are so grateful for this city that we live in and we pray, Lord, as the council talk and deliberate, as people communicate their needs and wants with the council today. I pray, God, there be great peace in this place. I pray, God, that you would just rest on this place in an incredible way. We pray for all the people in our city, Lord, that are in need, those who are suffering or sick, those who are, Lord, in troubles. We pray, Lord, that even this council may have an opportunity to bring healing and restoration to people's lives. I pray, Lord, that they would govern faithfully and with a sense of urgency for the things that need to be done in this city. Pray for our mayor and family farmer, deputy and others on our council, Lord. We pray your blessing upon them as they pursue this work that they do today, and may, Lord, you be glorified in all things, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, so this now takes us to our public participation. So we have a community grant round one for 2021-22. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to call you out to the front and present to you, get a photo, but also want to hear from you about your organisation and what extra funding means to you. So I'll ask the deputy mayor to join me. Okay, so we'll start off with the Mount Isa Pistol Club, and we have Stan and Greg. Is that right? Come along.
Okay, I wasn't really prepared for this, but yeah, thank you to the Mount Isa City Council for this grant, for this round of sponsorship. It means a great deal to us. It helps further our club and we have had grants in the past, which is greatly appreciated. It's making the club a much better place for everyone in the community and yeah, we just really appreciate the sponsorship. This money is going towards a new defibrillator for our club, just another safety aspect that we're looking into and just keeping our club up to, yeah, up to speed with safety and everything like that. Sorry? It's just a safety thing going forward, yeah. Really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Our next recipient is Mount Isa Golf Club, and that's Bob Jaikman.
Yay, Citizen of the Year.
Just like to thank the Mount Isa City Council. It's been a bit of a godsend, this thing. This will help us put my school system in that makes it a lot easier for doing the handicaps, scoring the cards, booking tee times, and it's just going to make it a lot easier for all concerned. Just like to thank Mount Isa City Council again.
Thank you, and you're the Mount Isa Senior Citizen of the Year, is that right?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
And tell us what that meant to you.
Oh, that was just a great, great thing. It was a bit of a shock, but yeah, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob, and thank you for what you do with golf.
Thank you.
Keep in mind, this is the best part of our job, handing out checks. So the next one is to the Mount Isa Amateur Netball Club, and we have Romwen and Tamara.
He's got red. Oh, she's used to that.
Good morning, everyone. On behalf of Mount Isa Amateur Netball Association, we'd like to say thank you to Mount Isa City Council for this grant. It means a lot to our association. We used to be quite static in our numbers over the previous years, and there's evidence showing that we are starting to grow, and having a new deep fry will help us meet demand with the increase in participation, and that's what we want, increase all around. I do know the canteen also serves with our youth as work experience. They can put that on their resumes, not to say they couldn't do that anyway, but to help make it more productive and functional. I would like to say anything as well, because she really did help support in this role.
Look, the association, at the moment, we have numbers of over 500 people, and they're all men, women, children, all different shapes and sizes. Social atmosphere where everybody can come and have a go. It fosters a lot of community resilience as well, like when things need to be done, working bees, a lot of people band together. So for us to sort of receive money to further those, you know, update our canteen and provide something exciting for that membership base that constantly give back as well is really exciting, so much appreciated.
Well done, ladies.
Okay, so that takes us to our next recipient, and he's actually my opposition, but it's Parkside United Junior Football Club, and Joshua, or Josh.
A big thank you to Mount Isa City Council. Yeah, this money is really important to our, we've been a junior club in Mount Isa for, this is our 60th year this year, so yeah, pretty impressive for any sporting club, I think. Our 37th year at Jimmy Gamble Sporting Complex over in Soldiers Hill. So we're, you know, trying to build up the club, give a home to it. So the money's going to go build a brand-new shed. There's a space there that's being used as storage at the moment, storage space, so we'll sheet the walls, give, somewhere for our committee members to, you know, take members in, do regos, you know, any issues, you know, to our sport, really. So yeah, it's going to be massive for our guys, you know, they're doing it in the elements at the moment, you know, sitting there with laptops out in the sun. It's going to be great, great for our club, so thank you.
And I just want to add to that, I play soccer, played soccer for 29 years, and I know the people who come in and make a difference, and Josh is definitely one of them, and he leads the charge for Parkside, he never misses a meeting, he's always at a working bee, and it's volunteers, like people in the audience today and Josh, that keep our sports alive, and really it's a credit to you, and we really thank you very much, and we're glad as a council we can support sporting groups, clubs and organisations ourselves. Last but not least, we have Stack City, and we have, is it Jono?
Jono.
Jono! Soon as I take my glasses off, hello.
Yeah, just like to say a big thank you, Mount Isa City Council, it's really appreciated. We're not a massive club, but we're just trying to keep sport going here in Mount Isa and also trying to get it on the map, get Mount Isa on the map for mountain biking. It's a big sport out there, and so getting news all over the world, actually, and we're just, we're really pushing hard to do what we can here in Mount Isa, because it'll be a great thing for the island to see, and if we can push it. This money is going towards a trailer for us, so that we can store that gear in when we have events, working bees, it'll be as simple now as hooking the trailer up and going out, and we can go to our track maintenance, we can hold our events off in the trailer. So it'll be a big help and it'll just speed the process up and also take stress off guys, so it's brilliant, it's going to help massively, yeah, so.
And can I just ask you, so were you guys interested in the pump track that we put in?
Yeah, we actually had a party, we did a bit of test riding, Patrick was involved there, so yeah, that's going to be a great fun thing.
Do you think this could inspire some juniors to come and join you?
Yeah, 100%.
Well, that's great to hear, I think it's good for everyone to hear that, you know, these little things that really help sport grow.
Yeah, definitely.
And is it an Olympic sport?
Um, I don't know.
You'll have to find out, we've got to find out. So, well, congratulations and thank you again.
Thank you very much.
So what Mount Isa City Council does is every Friday they have casual for a course, so if you come in on a Friday, everyone looks like backpackers, but everyone's quite relaxed, and they all donate coins, money, and after a month, they pick a charity which they donate to. So this month, they picked the Rotary Club of Mount Isa, and they've donated $294.60. Now, no one from Rotary could come today, unfortunately, but Petra from Mount Isa City Council is going to come along and just explain why, look, are you from Rotary? No, oh, no. So she's going to explain why the staff pick Rotary.
So Rotary's been in Mount Isa since 1958, and they're a fantastic community organisation that likes to give back, and, you know, they're just one of those contributors to events and things like that, that work very hard in the background. I'm sure everyone's seen a Rotary trailer or someone cooking up at a function somewhere. So Mount Isa City Council looks for worthy causes, and we certainly thought that Rotary was one that was well worth sponsoring from their contribution that they give back to the community. As you can all appreciate, everyone gives back to the community as volunteers, and these guys do a fantastic job as well. Thank you.
And I just want to mention that it's not a notice, and in 2032, there's an Olympics Games going to be held in Brisbane, and I really, really want to see some Mount Isa people, some Mount Isa kids go and represent Mount Isa, the North West, and Queensland, and so, and Australia. So, you know, it's important that as a council, we get behind all the sporting organisations. So thank you to everyone, all the volunteers, and as I said, without you, sport wouldn't go ahead, so we really appreciate that when people step up and do a lot for sport, so thank you again. That cricket sound just came in time, didn't it? Okay, would someone like to move the confirmation of the previous? No? No, I'm just asking if someone wants to move that. Oh, okay, sorry. Have I jumped ahead? Oh, yes, sorry, I've jumped one, which is always good. Okay, would someone like to move that in accordance with the Section 162 of the Local Government Act 2009, council receive and accept leave application from the Deputy Mayor, Phil Barwick?
So move.
Thank you, Councillor Fortune. Would someone like to second that motion? Thank you, Councillor Tully. All those in favour? And that's carried. Sorry, Deputy Mayor, I must, missed you out there. And we'll continue on now with the rest of the meeting, so if anyone wants to sneak out, by all means, but if you'd like to stay, by all means, please stay. So can I get someone?
Do we have to move that?
We did that.
Yeah, we did that, yeah.
We already did that, yeah.
Sorry, I missed it.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, guys, congratulations again. When do we do the public gallery? Okay, so if there is anyone in the public gallery that would like to speak, would you like to take the opportunity? Okay, so we'll move on now to Item 5, which is the confirmation of the previous meeting minutes. Would someone like to move that the minutes of the Ordinary Meeting held on the 20th of October 2021 be received and the recommendations here and be adopted?
I'll move, Barwick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Would someone like to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Councillor Tully. Would anyone like to speak on this motion? All those in favour? And that's carried. Takes us to Item Number 7, which is declarations of conflict of interest. Does anyone here have any conflict of interest they'd like to declare?
Yeah, Barwick, Madam Mayor, I have a conflict of interest that perceived conflict of interest prescribed, I think it is actually in the correspondence with the letter from checkup, so I'll step out for the room for that, please, there.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, thank you, Councillor MacRae. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to the Item 8, a Meryl Minut, which is nil, which then takes us to Item 9, reading and consideration of the correspondence. Okay, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Madam, through the chair, I'd like to move the officer's recommendation that councils receives and accepts the October 21, 2021 correspondence report.
Thank you, Councillor Fortune. Would someone like to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Councillor Tully. Would someone, anyone like to speak on, or any comments on this one?
No, thank you.
Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. All right, can we invite the mayor, the deputy mayor back in? Okay, that takes us now to Item 10.1, which is the update of Administrative Action Complaints Policy Version 4. Would someone like to move that motion, please?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, thanks.
Seconded, through the chair, I'll second it. I'm sorry.
We'll just get him to read the motion, get the deputy mayor to read the motion.
Yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor, that the council adopt the Administrative Action Complaints Policy Version 4.
Thank you.
And I'll second.
Thank you, Councillor Fortune. Any comments on this one?
No, Madam Mayor, it's important, we have policies in place for this, and it also links us to the governance as set out by the state government, local government department, and, you know, we need to bring this up to date from time to time, so this is a normal review. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. There's no other comments? All those in favour? Councillor MacRae, yep, okay, and that's carried. It takes us up to 10.2, which is the update of Advisory Committee Committee's Policy Version 2. Would someone like to move that motion?
Through the chair, I'll move that, thank you, Madam Mayor. Oh, sorry, I'll move that, council adopt the Advisory Policies Committee Version 2.
Thank you, Councillor Fortune. Would someone like to second?
Second.
Thank you, Councillor Stratten. Would anyone like to speak on this motion?
Yes, I would, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. The recommended changes in there that we've accepted is that with our Advisory Committee's policy, with bringing members of the community on to the Advisory Committee under council, it allows, also allows for a councillor to become chair of that committee too as well. Previously, the wording didn't allow for that, and the chair can be elected by the committee, but this also allows a councillor to be elected as chair as well.
Okay. Any other comments on this one? No, all right, all those in favour? That's carried. Yes, Councillor MacRae. I'll move mine closer. All right, that takes us to 10.3, which is submission to the parliamentary inquiry into the functions of the independent assessor and performance of those functions. Would someone like to move that motion?
I'll move, Madam Mayor. I'll move that council endorsed the submission to the parliamentary inquiry into the functions of the independent assessor and the performance of the functions.
Thank you. Would someone like to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you.
Sorry. Councillor MacRae can do it.
Councillor MacRae, thank you. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of that motion?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. This review into the independent assessor, I think, follows from a groundswell of, you know, concerns around the office of the independent assessor and their actual intent in terms of the local government's control, so I think it's timely, I think it follows on from our submission of motions at the local government conference earlier in the year, and I think we've tried to capture that within the submission. The submission outlines a few things in there that are concerning to our council as it sits in Mount Isa, including some of the time taken and the way that complaints are addressed, and also the management and dealing of vexatious frivolous complaints. And I think it is timely, it's been in place for a while now, so I think it'll be interesting to see the results of this as they come out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Would anybody else like to comment on this? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us to Item 10.4, and that's a submission to the proposed local government sustainability framework. Would someone like to move that motion, please?
Move.
Thank you, Councillor Stratten. Someone like to second?
I'll second, Barwick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Stratten, would you like to?
Yeah, just like to read a bit of information about it. All councils fight to unique financial service deliveries and community need circumstances. The challenges of ensuring local government sustainability is an important issue for all councils and the Queensland Government. The establishment of a new sustainability framework will form the basis of the department's monitoring of council's performance and sustainability, and will assist the department in providing more targeted support to council. The proposed sustainability framework underpins existing legislative requirements.
Thank you, Councillor Stratten. Was any other comments on this one?
I think Mayor, Councillor Stratten's captured it fairly well. I think there's a recognition that not all councils are the same, and they need different measures of support from the state government, so it's timely as well. Thank you.
Thank you. No other comments? All those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us to the Media and Communications Report for September and October for 2021. Would someone like to move that motion?
I'll move, Madam Mayor. That council receives and accepts the September and October 2021 Media and Communications Report.
Thank you. Can I get a second of that? Thank you, Councillor Tully. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. It's business as usual across September, and it outlines, you know, the activity that takes place within our communications department, and I think, you know, you can see within the report there, there's a whole range of things that we've covered off on, including media releases, lots of radio, TV interviews, and social media as well. We try to maintain a high level of engagement with the community and get our messages out there and some advices on what's coming up and what we're doing, including community consultations, and I think, you know, whilst there are still gaps within that, I think we're doing the best we can within this environment at the moment.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other comments?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. I was just wondering whether there was any feedback on how many people are viewing the live views, the live streaming?
Through you, Madam Mayor. We're not attracting a huge amount of people with live streaming. We are getting some people that go and download the YouTube option afterwards, but that would not exceed a dozen people.
It depends on the topic, but as of live streaming this meeting, we have one person accessing it, and that could well be an employee.
No, it's my mum.
So, no, we're not achieving a lot, and I know in that regard in numbers, but the YouTube is getting a few views. I know when we did the consultation on Centennial Place on Monday night, we had one, we had one. Oh, that was you. We didn't have any.
I'd say it's my mum.
No, it was you. So in answer, the question is, no, we're not getting huge numbers.
Could we possibly get something sent around on the numbers just to give us an idea of who's actually watching it live and who's watching it after the fact? Is that possible? Yeah, okay, that'd be great.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I think the YouTube tells you the number, it does, so it will tell you the number of visits.
Yeah.
So if you go onto council's website and the YouTube area, you will find the exact number of visits.
Are we getting any big numbers at all for the visits? Yeah. Hundred, okay, well, that's still good. Okay.
Thank you.
Did I answer that? And again, if you do want the numbers, we can organise that.
No, yeah, no, I was just wondering, you know, whether or not it was. No, uh, yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I was just wondering, you know, whether or not it was worth the, um, live streaming going ahead at all.
Through you, madam mayor. Keep in ti- keep in mind, probably the most important time for live streaming is, uh, during, uh, disaster management issues and that comes to the forefront there. So the investment made in the, the cameras and microphones and whatnot here by no means would be wasted once you're in a disaster management situation. And this is the LDMG room as well, so it ties in directly to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's no other comments? All those in favour? And that's carried. So that takes us to item ten point six, which is the renewal of special lease thirteen slash five three zero one nine, described as lots twelve, thirteen and nineteen on Crown Plan C three, uh, it feels like I'm just gonna say C three P, C three nine three two dash four eight dash five two, Cronin and forty seven Beaumont Street, Kemewell. So would someone like to move that motion?
Through the chair, I'll move that recommendation, uh, madam mayor, that council advise the Department of Resources that, uh, council supports the renewal of special lease thirteen slash, uh, five three zero one nine, um, or the, uh, conversion to freeholds, uh, for lands described as lots, uh, twelve, thirteen and nineteen on Crown Plan C three nine three two and council confirms that the lots are not listed on council's heritage register and that council, uh, advised the Department of Resources that in the event, uh, lots twelve, thirteen and nineteen on Crown Plan three nine, uh, sorry, Crown Plan C three nine three two are on sale or used for a purpose other than public housing, all dwellings must obtain a Form twenty one, which is final certificate.
Thank, thank you councillor Fortune. Would someone like to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Councillor Fortune, would you like to speak on behalf of this?
Just an overview, the, the, uh, madam mayor, the, um, states, uh, uh, the state special lease, uh, thirteen, uh, slash five three zero one nine, uh, is due to expire from the current thirty, uh, year term on December twen- uh, twenty twenty three and is anticipated that the state will convert these parcels to freehold upon expiry. Uh, the lots are represented by the Department of Housing and Public Works.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Any other comments on this one? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so this takes us to item eleven, which is the corporate and community service reports. And the first one's eleven point one, which is waste management overview report for September and October twenty twenty one. Can I get councillor Streton to move this motion?
Yeah, madam mayor, um, eleven point one offers a recommendation there. Council receives and accepts the September and October twenty twenty one waste management overview report.
Thank you councillor Streton. Can I get a second of for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Um, councillor Streton, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Um, no, just, uh, we've, um, cleaned up the, uh, Kemewell situation, um, with the overload of rubbish out there and, um, fingers crossed, hopefully we'll have a new truck by the end of November.
Fingers and toes crossed.
Through, through you, madam mayor. Director Wallace, when are the trucks likely to be here?
Next week.
Ooh. So I think hopefully we should be getting back to norm. We've still got a couple more to come, but.
Thank you. Is there any other comments on this? All those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to the next one, which is eleven point two, the local laws overview report, September and October twenty twenty one. I'll hand back over to councillor Streton.
Thank you, madam mayor. Offers a recommendation there is council receives and accepts September and October twenty twenty one local laws overview report.
Thank you councillor Streton. Can I get a second of for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Uh, councillor Streton, would you like to speak on behalf?
Yeah, Mount Isa City Council and the Mount Isa Police Service. Mount Isa have continued the patrols in the Lycart Riverbed regarding their legal camping, drinking and littering. Council is currently organising no camping, no drinking alcohol, no littering signage along most of the affected areas. Due to a large number of den- noted and unvaccinated puppies being surrendered at the council pound, a number of puppies have been infected with parvovirus. For safety reasons, councils has limited the number of surrendered puppies at the animal management facility in order to organise a deep clean of the facility. Mount Isa City Council sourced the company to lay a protective cover on the concrete. This will greatly assist the cleaning and sanitisation to avoid the spread of parvovirus. This works will be completed mid-November.
Thank you councillor Streton. Um, would any, anyone else like to comment on this one? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. And this takes us to item thirteen point three, which is a finance overview report for October twenty twenty one and I'll hand over to the deputy mayor.
Uh, thank you, madam mayor. I'll recommend, uh, I'll move that council receives and accepts the October two thousand and twenty one finance overview report.
Thank you. And can I get a second of for that motion?
Streton.
Streton.
I thought, um, councillor McCrae was going, but.
Ah, okay.
Sorry, was that thirteen point two or eleven point three?
Oh, sorry, did I say?
Eleven point three.
Eleven point three.
Eleven point three. Sorry.
That's right.
Um, okay, so the second of was councillor Streton. Yep. Okay, so, um, deputy mayor, would you like to comment on this one?
Thanks, madam mayor. Um, so, uh, council continues to consolidate, um, at this time of the year. The capital expenditure activity remains relatively high and that's, uh, a lot of that from a carryover of committed expenditure from the previous year. Um, so we're ahead of, uh, ahead of the game there a little bit. Um, we've got a surplus of operating of one point eight million, um, compared to an operating deficit budget of point five million, so, so that's looking, um, quite healthy at this time. Um, so the, uh, that was, um, sort of, um, supported by the issue of the rates, um, component, uh, for the period of July two thousand and twenty one to December twenty one, um, which has brought us, um, up to the level that we need to be. Um, I'd just like to mention, um, there's a capital summary there, which shows us a breakup of how we're, we're, um, it's quite well done, actually shows us the percentages of, um, capital expenditure against the items, um, uh, that we, uh, need to do such as roads, um, water, sewage, parks and gardens and most, um, mobile plant and stuff. Uh, there's the outstanding, um, age rates, uh, balance table there at the moment, so that's quite high, uh, due to the recent issue of the rates, uh, for this period. It's up to twenty four point six million in total, including eighteen point mil- uh, eighteen point eight that's not currently due yet. Uh, we're still sitting with a, sitting with a high, um, outstanding balance of three point eight million, um, which is well in arrears and that, uh, I believe the administration are working heavily on now to, um, to, uh, try and administrate that. Uh, and just a final note, that the tip tokens were also issued to residential rate payers with the last rates notice as well, so they're valid from the first of November two thousand and twenty one, uh, to expire on the thirtieth of June two thousand and twenty two. Uh, thank you.
Thank you deputy mayor. Is there any other comments or questions on this one? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. And this takes us to eleven point four, splashes overview report, October twenty twenty one. And I will hand over to councillor McCrae? Is it, is it councillor? Oh, so councillor Cooglan, yep. Sorry about that.
I'd like to, um, uh, recommend that council receives and accepts the October twenty twenty one splashes overview report.
Thank you, councillor Cooglan. Could someone second that, uh, motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Councillor Cooglan, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, just very quickly, I know the, the pool has been inundated since it has opened, um, after September. Uh, a lot of schools are using it now for the swimming carnivals this time of year and I know the feedback, uh, that I'm getting from the schools that have used it has been, um, quite good. Uh, the shade area has made a huge, huge difference, especially, um, for little ones, uh, people watching. It's not so hot, um, which is great to see and I think that's a big reason why our numbers are, are getting quite high. Um, it's good to see that, um, we're pushing forward with the first aid room. And also, I just would like to ask the, through the chair to the CEO. Um, I know staffing's always an issue with the, um, with the splashes. The bronze medallion scheme that does run like through the pool, um, is that gonna be something that's gonna be a yearly thing that we're gonna try and implement?
Through you, madam mayor. Um, I'm unsure of the bronze medallion. We have had a trainer up here training everyone in relation to being a lifeguard. So there are, and director, uh, Languana might help me out here, but, um, I reckon, uh, over the weekend it was either between eight and twelve young people that were trained up. I believe they're doing their, they've done their life saving and they're doing their first aid. So this is the largest amount of casual staff that we've ever had basically at the pool. Uh, director Languana, don't forget to speak into the microphone.
Excellent. Um, the other thing I'd like to know, we, we're going to purchase, um, water slides, floaty things. Will they be here in time for the Christmas holidays?
Through you, madam mayor. I'll go to director Wallace, who's looking after inflatables.
Inflatables, that's the word, it's not floaty things, inflatable. Uh, thank you, it has been ordered, uh, the, the mid-December.
Excellent then. Well, I thank you for that, yeah, and I think all these, um, the improvements we're doing to splashes is just making it better and better for families, people that wanna just keep fit, so it's really good that we're being very proactive in this space.
Definitely, and I think the extra shade now and also the, the lounges are a really big hit. Um, can I ask, um, director, we're getting more seating. Uh, do we have an ETA on that or what's the plan with that one?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, we have, uh, that has been ordered, I believe to that.
It's. Fantastic. Thank you so much. Is there any other comments or questions on this one? Okay, all those in favour? And that is carried. And this takes us to item eleven point five, which is the environmental and biosecurity overview report for September and October for twenty twenty one and I'll hand over to councillor Streton.
Thank you, madam mayor, through the chair. Um, ca- uh, council receives and accepts the September and October twenty twenty one environmental and biosecurity overview report.
Thank you councillor Streton. Would, is there a second of for this motion?
Seconded through the chair.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Councillor Streton, would you like to speak on behalf of this?
Give a bit of an overview. Environmental and biosecurity services process. A total of twenty nine requests for environmental related services and complaints for September and October, which is thirty percent lower than August twenty twenty one. The environmental health officers have issued a hundred and sixteen licenses so far out of a hundred and twenty one environmental services applications received for the financial year and will continue to issue licenses all through November twenty twenty one. The envi- environmental officers issued three after hours noise permits to businesses within the Mount Isa. Various environmental protection activities were performed over the period of September and October, which includes inspection and treatment, various sites with insecticide in Mount Isa and Kemewell. Ten eighty baiting was conducted in September twenty one by the rural lands officer and vector control. And I'd just like to add, the, um, there is signs along the highway warning people that ten eighty baits are laid in these areas. So if you have pets, make sure you keep them on a leash if you're out and about.
Thank you, um, that's really good to know. Um, would any else, anyone else wanna comment or ask a question on this one? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so this takes us now to eleven point six, which is the prin- principal pedestrian network. And I'll hand over to councillor McCrae for this one.
I don't think she heard, madam mayor.
Uh, uh, councillor McCrae, would you like to move this motion? Um, thank you so much. Can I get a second of for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Streton. Um, councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion? Thank you. Any other comments on this one?
Um, I, I have on, on this one, it is a good initiative tha- that we are doing. Uh, the walking footpath or network around the CBD, there are a few areas that, um, I've basically got a few concerns with. I think councillor McCrae and myself have discussed a few of them, so it would be good to be kept, um, updated with any progress o- on this.
Thank you councillor Cooglan. Um, can we?
Through you, madam mayor. The director's noted that and she'll make sure.
We'll, we'll make sure we keep updated in, uh, workshops. Any other comments on that one? Alright, all those in favour? Which takes us now, oh, sorry, and that's carried. Which takes us now to item eleven point seven, which is in-kind request from Yalambi Reserve. Would someone like to move this motion?
Oh, madam mayor, I'll move the recommendation that council provide a one-off bulk rubbish collection and disposal of waste from Yalambi Reserve at an estimated cost of five thousand dollars through in-kind support.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Would someone like to second this motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Um, councillor Fortune, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Thank you, madam mayor. Um, the bulk rubbish collection is to remove, um, unusable items such as car bodies, couches, fridges, beds and other, um, large waste items that are unable to be placed in the bulk bins on the reserve. Uh, the Yalambi Reserve is owned by the Department of Communities, Housing and Digital Economy, economy and provides, uh, accommodation, uh, for homeless indigenous, uh, residents. Um, uh, these, uh, uh, the point of the, um, rubbish pickup is to clear out the yards and houses because the, um, Department of Communities and Housing are doing, uh, inspections and there's a risk that, uh, people who are living in those res- residences could lose their accommodation if those, um, items are left in their, um, in, in the residences, uh, yards or, um, houses. So, uh, it would add to the homelessness in, in Mount Isa City and, uh, it's not good for, uh, anyone, uh, especially the people living in that reserve, so, uh, that's, um, the, the part of, uh, the recommendation for the request.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Anyone else wanna ask any questions or comment?
Through the chair, I'd just like to, um, just ask for some information regarding a couple of years ago within council, if sporting groups or community groups were looking at cleaning up their areas, their grounds or whatever, that they could, um, fill in a form through council to get reimbursed for what it costs them to take rubbish out to the, um, the dump. Is that still something that council do?
Through you, madam mayor. I'm not aware of it. Um, if we were doing it, it would appear regardless in the fees and charges.
Yep.
Um, and I can't recall it being in the fees and charges, but I'm happy to be corrected by any of the directors. I'm looking at director Languana.
I, I just know it did, um, first come in when we were charged the waste levy. Um, it was in the previous council and, um, yeah, it was something that was done then.
Through you, madam mayor. If, if it's something the council wants to push a- along, uh, that'd be a good thing to do as we, uh, start doing budget preparation.
Okay, yeah. Okay, and, and was a motion that was put through, you're saying, council?
No, I, I just know it was something that, that could be done for sporting and community groups because I looked into it for one organisation and, and that's the information I was told.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, through the chair, that we, we did in, in the previous term, before the waste levy came in, there was an amnesty that- Yeah. Sorry, through the Chair, we did in the previous term, before the waste levy came in, there was an amnesty that we did for people that could put stuff out on the footpath as well as sporting clubs and proud of that. So that was.
So through you, Madam Mayor, we don't have a hard waste collection in place at this point in time and I would, it'd be a good idea to have very detailed policy around a hard waste collection. Councillor Coglan's mentioned the two amnesty days previously and I believe that's been looked into at the moment.
Through the Chair, Mr. CEO, there was a, there was a community group, I think this is one councillor Coglan's talking about. We did, they were going around to houses that people had unfortunate circumstances and rubbish overflowing. I think it was a church group and we did waive the fee for that community group at the dump to clean out those places.
And they have just recently come to council and asked about.
Yeah, I think there was something passed, but I don't know if they're still going, you know, that was last term.
Yep. So through you, Madam Mayor, it was probably a good idea not to do the individual cases, but we can come back to a briefing session and let councillors know where that's at.
Okay, that'd be good. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I just comment? I think this in-kind support for Yalambi is a good initiative. It's, it just makes sure that, you know, we're providing equity across the city and that's sort of an anomaly because they're reserved. So I think it's important that we give them these services. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Is there any other comments? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. So that takes us to item eleven point eight, which is in-kind request Mount Isa Pistol Club. Would someone like to move the motion, please?
I'll move, Madam Mayor. I'll move the council provide in-kind support to provide labour and plant to deliver approximately two hundred and twenty-eight metres cubed of unusable fill to the Mount Isa Pistol Club to create a new shooting area at a maximum cost of ten thousand dollars.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Would someone like to move that?
Streton.
A second. Thank you, councillor Streton. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. I received a request which I passed on to the CEO from the Mount Isa Pistol Club. They have, you know, a programme to develop the site up there and part of their responsibilities and their safety and security up there is to have an area where they can basically shoot targets and there's, you know, there's no potential for any risk around that. So part of that's a, four shipping containers there and they shoot into those, but they need to have them topped up with fill. And it doesn't matter what sort of fill, so it just seemed to be a natural fit for council to be able to where they are lumbered with unusable fill, that they've got somewhere to take it and it can be useful. So there's no urgency around this, but it's good to have it on the record. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And this takes us to eleven point nine, which is cities power partnership. Would someone like to move the motion, please?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council supports Mount Isa City Council becoming a member of the cities power partnership.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Would someone like to second that motion?
Streton. Okay.
Councillor McCrae, thank you. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, so it's, it's one of those networking and lobbying advocacy type of arrangements. It's about member councils, I think there's a hundred and forty-five of them going forward. You know, working with the climate council and promoting independent research and policy proposals. And I think with the recent forum in Britain, that the, you know, it's really high on the agenda of most governments and councils at the moment around climate control. So so I think it's a good place to be.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this one? Okay, all those in favour? Carried. So the next one is eleven point ten, which is Lake Mundara Advisory Committee. Would someone like to move this motion, please? Thank you, councillor McCrae. Would someone like to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion? Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this one?
Madam Mayor, I'll comment. Look, I think Lake Mundara could, you know, in the longer term be a really iconic place and a great addition to Mount Isa to have some of the, you know, the objectives and the you know, the forward planning come out of this group in, with council supporting it. There's a lot of stakeholders involved in this potential advisory committee and I think the first thing that we can do is really get this group together, support it actively and start doing some strategic planning around what Lake Mundara, the recreation and business activities that are possible out there. And I think it could be something really special in a few years' time. Thank you.
Definitely. I think that it's an untapped resource for sure and it'll be great to get different people from the community on the advisory committee because I certainly would love to see some kind of chapel out there, more infrastructure for families and of course, I'd like to see Survivor hosted out there as well. So there's so much that could be done at Lake Mundara and it'd be good to get all the community, whoever's really interested to get on board. So yeah, it's really exciting. If there's no other comments or questions, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so this one now takes us to item twelve, which is infrastructure service reports and twelve point one, which is major projects overview report. And I'll hand over to councillor Tully to do the, move the motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to recommend that council receive and accept the October twenty twenty-one major projects overview report as presented.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Can I get someone to second that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick overview, the contract works on the Kemwell Hall are complete with the new stumps installed. The recent completed shade structures that we spoke about before at the Splashes Aquatic Centre, plus the sun lounges are now available to everyone to use and from all reports, that's getting used well. And council have ordered a sixteen point four metre long inflatable pool obstacle course, which is scheduled before Christmas. Yes, so that's due for delivery before Christmas.
Thank you, councillor.
That's it, thank you.
Yep. Thank you, councillor Tully. Anyone else want to comment or ask a question on this one? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. Which takes us to item twelve point two, which is works and operations overview report. And again, I'll hand back to councillor Tully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Recommend that council receive and accept the October twenty twenty-one works and operations overview report.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Can I get a second for that motion?
Streton.
Thank you, councillor Streton. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The council's focus this month was to complete maintenance in preparation for the up and coming wet season, including the riverbeds, causeway and an approximately a thousand tonne of sand and trees to allow the water to run freely down the river and into the lake. And I think that's, yes, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment or ask questions on this report? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so we're up to item twelve point three, which is the contract for the provision of bitchment resurfacing. Councillor McCrae has Thank you, councillor McCrae. So I'll note councillor McCrae has jumped off the teleconference and we'll dial her back in after this one. So I'll hand over to councillor McCrae.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd go with the recommendation that council award contract two zero two one dash one four two RPQ Spray Steel Proprietary Limited for the sum of three hundred and four thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents excluding GST for the council's annual road sealing programme of approximately sixty thousand square metres.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Would someone like to second that motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick overview, there were four tenders received and all tenders are experienced and capable of owning and taking the works. The works will be funded from the existing budget allocation of four hundred thousand and RPQ, which were, like was stated earlier, they've been the successful bidder with a sum of three hundred and four thousand, two hundred and nine. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Any other questions or comments on this one?
Yes, I have. With this one, again, I think I've asked this question before. If a member of the public does have a problem with their road, think their road's not up to scratch, is there a process that they have to go through that they could get put on this list through the CEO? Sorry.
I said the same thing.
So obviously if there's a specific issue a resident has with their road, they can ring up council and it'll be assessed in the normal way. In terms of these works, it's a bit like painting a house. It's just resealing the road, but if they believe their road is in need of such works, then it's just a matter of contacting us. Every year, this list, we have a master list, but every year this has to be reviewed. They're all driven. And then a decision's made whether it'll be included or not.
Thank you.
And just through you, Madam Mayor, adding to that, through the budget and the consultation process with the budget, anyone's allowed to pop a letter in and turn around and say, I think it's time you resealed my road.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, councillor Coglan. Any other comments?
Through the Chair, Madam Mayor, I'll just comment. It's great to see some of these car parks and that and particularly the Gallipoli Car Park included in this. I think that's important not to miss those things throughout the year. It's easier to concentrate on roads and footpaths, but the car parking is certainly valuable as well. Thanks.
Thank you. There's no other comments? All those in favour? And that's carried. All right.
Yeah, I thought you were looking at me for a reason, David, that's all.
I'll just wait for the councillor to dial back in. Okay, so now that takes us now to item twelve point four, which is building our region projects, water and sewage. And I will hand over to councillor Tully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd go with the recommendation that council review and approve the potential projects listed to gain possible funding from round six of the Building Our Better Regions Programme. And they are reservoir for refurbishment, Kemwell water treatment, Ramuiv network cross connections, glider port planning and design, hydraulic model update, DMA creation, Takadu participation, odor treatment, SPS upgrades and replacement, SPS generator provision, sewer system two in the industrial area, hydraulic model preparation, Buchanan Park recycled water irrigation and CBD recycled water connection. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Any other comments on this one? Oh, sorry.
Streton.
Thank you, councillor Streton, for the second. Any other, any comments, councillor Tully, on this one?
Yes, thank you. It's part of the Building Our Regions funding and the state government has requested expression of interest for projects to receive funding under the Building Our Regions Programme, round six, which is providing up to seventy million in funding for regional and local governments to improve water supply and sewage systems. The first requirement is that council submit expressions of interest for construction projects by twenty-third of November twenty twenty-one for planning projects by twenty-first of December twenty twenty-one. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Okay, so it's building our better regions and it should just say building better, building our regions.
Isn't it building our regions?
It's building our regions.
Yeah, that's right. And it's got better.
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
Good pick-up there.
Really good pick-up. Thank you, Director. Through you, Madam Mayor. One's obviously a state government one and the other one's a federal government one.
It's important to distinguish between those two. Okay. Would anyone else like to comment or any questions on this one? Okay, all those in favour?
Just, I'm sorry, through the Chair, I'd just like to congratulate the report that Stephen did on that. I think that's pretty impressive, so. Well done.
Thank you, councillor Tully. All that was, all those in favour? And that's carried. It takes us now to item twelve point five, which is the Buchanan Park absolutions block. And who? Yep.
I'll move the council award the Buchanan Park absolutions block contract to OSCO for nine hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and forty dollars, including GST.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Streton.
Okay, thank you, councillor McCrae. Councillor Coglan, you lost the page?
No, all good. Found it, sorry.
You found it, okay.
Click on the draw.
Councillor, Deputy Mayor, would you like to comment on this one?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. So this is funding we've already received from the Department of Infrastructure, Transport, Regional Development and Communications for local roads and community infrastructure programme. A sign of the times, we've tried to procure a tenders for a job in Buchanan Park to construct a poultry pavilion and unfortunately received no bids for the work. We are time constrained with this money, so the administration has provided us with the option of constructing ablutions blocks there, which are well needed in the area of the showmans guild and the radio competitors. So we've been successful in phase three of this funding. We'll move the poultry pavilion into this phase to be completed by June two thousand and twenty-three. So yeah, it was just a bit of a change around in our programme. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Is there any questions or comments on this one? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. Which takes us now to item twelve point six, which is the principal cycling, cycle network prioritisation. I'll hand over to councillor McCrae. Ah, yes, please. Is that right? That's right? Yep. Thank you, councillor McCrae. Would someone like to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion? Thank you councillor McCrae. Any other questions or comments on this one? Alright, all those in favour? And that's carried. And for item thirteen, notice of motion is nil. And, um, just before we move into confidential, um, it is sort of with regret that we, um, are losing one of our executive management team, which is Bernard Smith. He came on board, um, about this time last year. About October, November last year, and, um, he has actually filled in, um, a few gaps and have been very instrumental in the MRF, which is the, um, um, material waste, um, sorry, materials recovery and, and also, um, with the waste levy as well, has sort of helped us on top of that and, um, have filled a lot of gaps. CEOs or any, there's so many things that Bernard's been a part of.
On behalf of the executive management team, I'd like to thank Bernard for everything he's done, especially with some of our younger staff and also some of the managers and directors. Uh, Bernard's knowledge in local government is comprehensive, um, and he's really, um, he's taken a lot of interest in the Kemewell refurbishment of the hall down there, I think that's your favourite project, isn't it? Oh, good. Um, but Bernard's, Bernard's assisted during some of our disaster management exercises and where we have had disasters as well and has been available to staff and provide professional advice to council as well. So he's really been appreciated during this period of time. Um, I don't know if any councillors want to make any comments?
Yeah, I'd like to state with CEO that, um, yes Bernard, I've got a, um, great passion with Kemewell and thank you for overseeing that project and, um, the Kemewell people like it too.
And, yeah, and before you speak Bernard, I'd just like to say that I, I know I speak on behalf of all the councillors when I say that, you know, you've been a a fantastic addition to our team and we are sorry to see you go and we wish you all the very best in your future endeavours and hopefully we do, you do call in on us or we do see you from time to time.
No, thanks very much Madam Mayor. Yeah, I came for six months and ended up staying twelve, so hopefully that was a good sign, but yeah, I just want to express my appreciation to David and the council for giving me the opportunity to come here and assist where I could. Uh, a lot of progress has been made over the last twelve months, I can certainly attest to that. There's still more to be done, as there always is, but the main thing is you're going forward and, and certainly Mount Isa, uh, city council is, is going forward. I've always said that regional local government is the place to work, um, it's where local government can make a real difference. People want to feel good about where they live and the local council plays a really important part in that and that's certainly happening, happening here in Mount Isa, so again, um, to express my appreciation for my time here.
Thank you Bernard. Thank you, and we do too. Okay, so that takes me to, um, I'll, yeah, so now we're just adjourned, it's ten forty fourteen and we're just gonna move into closed business, so thank, thank you to the public gallery if you are leaving us.
Would someone like to move the following motion that council considers the following confidential reports in a meeting close to the public in accordance with section two five four J of the Local Government Regulation twenty twelve? Fourteen point one, the Order and Risk Management Committee meeting minutes dated the twenty eighth of October twenty one, unconfirmed. Fourteen point two, smart water meter installation. Fourteen point three, urgent stormwater repair, Coburn Street, is it Coburn Street or Coburn Avenue, doesn't matter. Fourteen point four, Buchanan Park Entertainment Centre warning and fourteen point five, notification of insurance claim. Someone like to move that motion?
I'll say move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fortune. Would someone like to second that motion?
Stretton.
Thank you, Councilor Streton. All those in favour? And that's carried. Um, the time is ten thirty and we're now in close business.
Move.
Thank you, councillor Streton, a second.
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, councillor Fortune, all those in favour. And that's carried. Okay, so would someone like to move 14.1, which is the Audit and Risk Management Committee meeting, minutes dated the 28th of October 21, unconfirmed?
Move, Barwick.
Do you want to read the motion?
Oh, sorry. I'll move that council receives and accepts the unconfirmed Audit and Risk Management Committee meeting, minutes dated 28th of October 2021, as presented.
Thank you. A second for that motion? Thank you, councillor Tully, all those in favour. And that's carried. 14.2, smart meter water installation, would someone like to move that motion?
Through the chair, I'll move the recommendation that council notes the increase in costs and allow for a further $800,000 ex-GST for meter changeovers for the 2223 budget, and that council receives a report at its January meeting after the first portion of the water replacement contract is completed in order to review the progress and to inform the remaining install.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Streton, all those in favour. And that's carried. That brings us to item 14.3, which is the urgent stormwater repair, Carbine Avenue. Would someone like to move that motion?
Yes, thank you, madam mayor. Recommendation that council engage in a play to urgently rely on collapsing stormwater pipes in Carbine Avenue under chapter six, section 235c, a genuine emergency exists of the local government regulation.
Thank you, councillor Streton. Can someone second that motion, please?
Tully.
Oh, Tully, sorry. Thank you, councillor Tully. Would someone like to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Streton, all those in favour. And that's carried. Item 14.4, Buchanan Park Entertainment Centre awning, would someone like to move that motion?
Through the chair, I'll move that council approved $30,000 capital budget item to complete rectification works to Buchanan Park Entertainment Centre awning.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Would someone like to second that motion?
Seconded, Streton.
Thank you, councillor Streton, all those in favour. And that's carried. And that takes us to the last one for the meeting, 14.5, which is a notification of insurance claim. Would someone like to move the following motion?
I'll move that council receive and accept the update regarding insurance claim, 15th of November 2021, as presented.
Thank you, councillor Coglan. Would someone like to second that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, councillor Fortune, all those in favour. And that's carried. Okay, it is now 11:27am and I now declare the ordinary meeting of Manor City Council closed. Thank you everyone for your participation.